Couldn't tell ya.
What does it say on it?
A camera thing?
No. What does it say on it?
Yeah, I made the motion, we open the meeting.
Well, I'm going.
Twenty-three.
You all on paper with that?
Not to ask them.
Yep.
I guess the first thing on the agenda is paperwork, so that would be you, Jen. Are you all set to go with what you got?
I just wanted to let you know that we received information from the Census Bureau. So, we have that.
Oh, goodie. These things that we need to make out or they just telling us things that we don't know?
It's in preparation.
We got another census coming up, do we?
Mm-hmm.
The 2020 census, oh boy, they did a nice early start, too. Okay. Yeah, this is just some information on the 2020 census that's is coming up. You ready for this?
Yeah, who wants that?
That's it? That's it?
Mm-hmm.
Well, this is gonna be quick. You know what, I'm gonna do something a little bit unusual. Anybody got any comments on anything? Questions?
Before the meeting?
Well, we actually get the meeting open. Jen had, we just, we don't have a bunch of paperwork at the moment, so... Anybody got any questions or anything you'd like to discuss for a moment or two? Mr. Thompson?
This is on the supplemental bill that you guys had requested, the calculation be done for the marijuana building down the road.
Oh. Okay. So you need a signature from us on this, right?
What has happened?
There's a bill regarding down the road that's...
Was missed last year.
Was missed last year.
Got a question you want me to answer?
This is the inside of, this is the information that we didn't have. So you can go ahead and get the bill properly done. Actually, we have everything now.
Right, that's just your new information?
Right, right.
Over here in the numbers down the bottom.
Yep.
Yep.
All right, thank you, Ben.
Wes, I do a quick question, something I just don't understand, maybe you can explain it? From the meeting the other day about the marijuana?
Can I stay on the subject first?
Oh, okay, sorry.
So we do have another abatement that I'm processing as well, but what I'm gonna do is make a phone call, so I'm gonna talk to the guy and probably look inside the house over there.
Okay, then.
On the water.
Yep.
Of course, then we got the county commissioners Wednesday, so...
Yep, okay.
No, no.
Well, it took a lot of time.
Back to you, man.
Why you wanna wait?
My husband asked me this. Facilities in town that have the marijuana growing in those little buildings, they're really ugly buildings, but... Does the town get any money from any of that?
Just property taxes.
That's all they get is property taxes?
On the ones that occur, yes.
And then if...
They're all, because they're all bigger, so...
Okay.
The state sets all the rules on those guys.
Then if any of the other things go on 202, the stores, the cafes and stuff like that? Besides the 50% of the license or whatever what it is? Do you guys get any money from those stores, what they sell?
Nothing's set up yet with that, the state nor us, nobody has any rules yet.
Thank you. Nothing? Wow.
Well, the state's working on it, so I understand.
That's all I have. Done it?
Okay. Anybody else?
What's your name?
Me?
Dorothy Bubbs. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Tell Jordan that Dorothy is here. I need a, I need a copy of what this concerns.
Okay.
Oops, I'm sorry. Yep.
So, we have properties that the town now owns through foreclosure. How do we go about getting a list of those properties and would be... How would the bidding be handled on that? Are you looking into using a, an auction, a property auction company? Or is that going to be handled privately through the town?
I'm gonna mail it to you. Excuse me. We're gonna post the bids and they mail them to us. And we'll open them on the thirtieth, was it?
Yeah, if it happens...
We'll open the things and that's it.
If it happens, right now, those people have got through the...
April thirtieth.
To pay and fill everything that they owe.
Okay.
And after that, if there's any left, there'll be a listing, there'll be an auction, and it'll be all publicized.
And are you going to set minimums on that? Or will the minimum be what's owed for taxes?
Yeah.
Yeah, what?
We'll probably set...
What owes the taxes plus...
Depends on the...
Well, which one? What's owed, he said, he said you're gonna set a minimum and you said it's gonna be for what's owed for taxes.
I said it depends on what's owed.
Minimum plus the cost, plus what they owe. In other words...
So it'll be the taxes that are owed plus whatever you guys...
Plus any other costs that are incurred because of that.
I see.
What if someone's living there?
It's up to whoever buys the place, so...
So if somebody buys it and the people still live in there and they won't leave there? The people that buy it have to get them out?
Yeah.
Yep.
Well, that's really unpleasant.
Costs of doing business sometimes.
Oh, my God. Go out on the street, but you find kids.
I need more than this. I needed to sign the rest of the information, because it's complicated. I got messed up on one the other night because of that.
The girls got punished.
Uh, any other questions or anything?
Spicy.
We did have a property tax inquiry, somebody, I don't know just what that's all about. Is that somebody here? Would that be you, David?
Yeah.
Okay. I'm waiting for Jordan to bring you back up some more information while you're there.
Yeah.
Okay. We do have some mowing bids that we're gonna open up tonight, sometime near before the meeting's over.
I have a...
We are not going to award those bids and we're not gonna award what anybody's... We're not going to disclose what anyone has bid tonight. We are gonna give, leave a list of names of who has put a bid. You got a question?
I do. When you open a bid, you have to read the bid. It's, once you open the bid, it's disclosed. You don't keep that number hidden.
So you wanna announce this to the world tonight?
Well, you read them when you open them. You read them right out loud, any bid I've ever been at.
I don't recall doing it that way. Did we know that though? Did we?
Yes.
So, we're, so then we're awarding the bid tonight, too?
No, you don't have to award it. You don't have to award it, no. But when you open it, you read it.
I just wanna make sure we're all clear on that, 'cause I figured somebody would question me on it eventually. All right. Then we shall do it, when the time comes.
Now, what are you talking about, what's going on?
Mowing bid.
No, no, I just brought back the, the mowing bids on today. This isn't what I wanted, though, is it?
Yeah, I just told you, he's gonna go make some copies in the morning.
They have more than this?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, I did. That's what happened on the other one the other day, it was a little mixed up. I didn't have all the information I needed, so... All right.
Yeah, the only one you really liked to talk about was the last one.
Thank you, Jordan. Okay. Johnny, if you'd like to come out and have a seat up there, so we can all hear each other better. You probably got a notice from us, did you? A red notice that had your four balls and...
No. What's good about it, yeah? I've been going to Connecticut every once or a time, and I've...
Oh, okay.
You know, and I can only get through so much, or my eyes get tired and I...
Yeah, I get you.
So, yes, I did get the little pink card, I didn't pay attention to it.
Okay.
So, I can't say that that's your fault, that's mine.
Well, but we thought, what the town is doing is... I just wanna check this. Is that the total of everything they gave you that day?
They didn't give me anything.
They didn't give you anything? You haven't even got a copy of your tax bill?
I do.
Okay. Okay, total, should agree with that one down there. I just wanna, I'm just doing that to make sure it goes right.
Okay, what are the extras?
The extras?
Yeah.
Uh... There's not, other than what it shows right on the bill itself, it's... This, this is the total, this would be the total that you owe.
Okay.
Oh, wait a minute, I'm sorry, it's not twenty-two, it's twenty-nine. 'Cause you owe, 'cause you owe for one, two, three years back. And that's why the foreclosure.
Thirty years, that change.
Yeah, so the whole thing comes to twenty-nine, ninety-nine, ninety-five.
I have twenty-five on me today.
Uh, you have until April thirtieth to come up with a total. Either in cash or a cashier's check.
My daughter said she could handle the rest of the funding.
Okay.
Wednesday and Thursday.
So if you'd like, if you would care to do that, and think you're gonna have the means to do it? Then if you'd like to, you can just take that right with you today. When you do come back before the thirtieth, you'll have, you'll...
I can do it to you all in one month, I can't give you what's in my pocket.
In other words, when you pay it all off, it's, you'll get a quick claim, the means you own your property again. And to do that, probably, that's something. So it's, is that easy, uh...
The other thing is this whole trustee to all kind of business.
Okay, is that...
As far as I understood, I got a trust from my husband, nobody's back in... Whenever, like, nineteen, before nineteen eighty-seven.
Okay, so there's no other claim there, then?
Um, it should have gone...
I'm sorry?
It should have gone to the G.I.R.T.S., because that wasn't a good name, but he was the trustee. So I don't know why, it's never changed.
Gary and Darren.
G.I.R.T.S. G.I.R.T.S. They call me Chris. And it's per call, yes. I don't know what the... I don't know, but he handled, like, the money onto my daughter's account.
So it's, you're saying it's been mailed out to the wrong person?
Oh, these years, yeah.
Oh. So how do you find out? How do you find out you owe the bill?
I haven't talked to her in twenty years or more.
Wow. Well, yeah, and how do you find out that you, what you owe for a bill? It, does...
Well, no, I, I get the bill.
Oh.
I just don't understand why that was never changed.
Well, we got a new town clerk since last year, so... No, no, whatever, what I was gonna ask you to do, if you wouldn't mind, go out and see, go out and see her? And tell her what's going on, give, give her the proper names and stuff, so that they can get that straight in the books in here.
Okay, 'cause I don't even know... I hadn't heard of him having anything to do with that one since he did the one after my...
So, yeah, so it's just a pain in the butt right now, so...
Yeah, yeah, so, I just thought I'd mention it, because it's been wrong forever.
Okay. So we're in agreement then, as to what's owed and how soon you can get in and pay it?
All righty.
Okay. Now, do, you, so you have the same copies I have, I guess, okay.
Mm-hmm.
All right. Well, that's all that's gonna happen at this point in time.
Where am I coming up with the twenty-nine?
That's right, yeah. That's the three years, that's the three years together, since twenty sixteen, fifteen, fourteen. You know, total of that becomes that one.
Wait, is that two hundred and thirty, then?
That's two thousand...
In a decimal way, I'm forgetting that.
Yeah, this shouldn't be...
Oh, my God. You wanna check on that?
I will. Let me just see what's...
I don't have the payment.
You're sorry?
How do you do an automatic payment? I just have the bank, sounds like I'm in a rut.
I honestly don't know, I think that you need to speak with, I mean, the clerk or the treasurer. I personally have no idea. I'm sorry.
What voice is it, sir? What voice is it?
That's what I said, I don't have any idea.
I think he should be able to answer. Who's it was? No, this didn't work. I'm gonna throw it up now. I don't have no brain. Condom man?
Mr. Thompson, can I see you for just a minute? We have an official, we have an official question.
I don't know why they just don't appoint him selectman again.
I don't know why, you're not gonna pay for it.
Am I gonna get trouble with the press and the brochure, is that town, or two?
All whispers. It's gonna all, all whispers. Want some of these? Want some of these?
So I go to the post office with these, I get thrown out of there, too.
Sure.
Then I was gonna put them on the cars in the parking lot at the school. I guess that wasn't a brilliant idea either.
So you have grandparents, old tourers at the school?
Yeah, it's too much to read, it's really too much for people to read. Gotta shrink it down.
All right. You can have both of those copies if you'd like, we've got others, too. All right. What do you think, yes? So everybody says we gotta open bids and... Name, names, sounds good to me.
You took it down, right?
Yes. Can you talk with Dana, we received, um, just so I can read it?
Yep. This one here's not mine. Thank you. Yeah, watch out for me.
Really, Dana, you gave him a sharp object.
Yeah, they don't usually sharpen that. This one here, I don't have a received date on. The name is Timothy Mayo. One thirty-eight Jamie Drive, Rochester. What's this, I get? T and M Landscape, L O C. And let's see, what this says here.
Can I take this payment in full here for...
You won't know.
You just met with her?
Yeah.
Can you take the payment in full?
Okay, the first one is...
I don't know.
Which is, what's she, what's going on?
Can, am I, can I take the payment in full on this account?
If she's got it.
Okay.
If she wants to. I didn't understand that she had the date, but if she does, then...
That's fine, okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah, but that's cash or cashier's check.
Okay.
Okay, this one here is for Town Office and Five Horn, nine hundred dollars once a week. Town Pound, nine hundred dollars, four times a month. Park and Ride, two hundred and eighty dollars every other week and twice a month. Old Town Hall, two hundred and eighty dollars. Last one between September fifteenth, I'm just guessing, you don't have any copies of these? And September thirtieth.
This is based on seven weeks?
Based on seven weeks.
They're gonna mow it?
Yeah. It's interesting, doesn't it? I don't know if you have a study on these. Okay, it also goes on to say, mowing and weed, what, weeding and whacking of sixty veteran cemeteries? At twenty-two hundred dollars per mowing. Two mowings in June, two mowings in July, and two mowings in August. Fall cleanup of sixty veteran cemeteries, twenty-four hundred dollars. Total mowing, thirteen thousand, two hundred dollars. Cleanup, twenty-four hundred dollars. Feel free to take those. We're gonna have to, just... Already complicated, I guess. This one is received by...
Now, I got a question on those, Roy, as you're opening them?
What's that?
As you're opening them, does it have references in there as well?
As, what do you mean for references?
Because in your bid specs, it says you have to have two references.
Okay.
So I'm just wondering, like...
I don't know.
Last time we did this, we didn't have, like, everything that was in the bid specs.
Right.
And one of them is references, we're doing the same paperwork.
Okay.
So we don't get a hold of them, I'm just gonna try to do this and can't do it.
Is that something that we've got written into the record that's, that we do?
It's right in the bid specs.
It is?
Yep.
They ask for insurance this time?
I don't see any references here yet, on that first one. On any of that paperwork, on the first one, or on this second one.
You can look at the bid specs and see what it says, because they should...
I don't have them right in front of me.
Because if it's something in the bid, you should have your references in there? If that's what it calls for.
Yep. Do we have a copy of those? Ron, do you have to have a copy of the bid specs? All right, appreciate if you could.
Dana probably has it in his... His bag is getting bigger and bigger. Let's see who can get it first, the treasurer or Dana? I would, too.
I didn't talk to me neither.
They have to send you after it, at this rate. No, I think that he should be operative on here.
Should be the operative word.
Should is the operative word. My apologies, I'm having that out here in front of me. I'm new with the job, you know.
Yep.
Can I use that three years from now?
No.
Put you there.
You ready? Are you ready?
No.
Just a question.
No.
Yay!
Little Genzy.
Whatever, I, I know what it is, so...
They didn't ask for any insurance proof?
I think if you're awarded, that's all that even works.
Last year I was included in the bid, 'cause they turned down a couple people, local town people, for not having the insurance in there.
Yeah, there is, it is, I just read it here.
What, insurance?
Proposal requirements, general statement of qualifications. Provide a general statement of qualification that demonstrates the firm's qualifications and intent to meet the terms of this agreement. And number two, references, provide no less than two independent references that can demonstrate or confirm the contractor's ability to successfully perform the services required under the scope of the work. And just 'cause honestly, you want the bids to do all that stuff. Correct.
So, my question to you is if there's no references in there, are you accepting the bids?
Well...
Because it's right in there, that should be in your bid package.
It should be.
The way around the town does it.
It should be, right about that. Let's see if we got any, let's see if we got anybody that sent their references. Okay, let's go with, we're recording those, so that first one's got no reference, it went right down that way. And the second one is gonna be the same thing, I think. As it says, Town Eleven and Mowing Bid, AP Landscapes, Plains Road, Hollis, Maine. Have several years of property maintenance experience. They have proper equipment to take care of all the job details outlined, been planned to do so in a timely and professional manner. Goes on to say, first, there's a couple people's names.
References?
As references.
There you go.
This one here says Joan Grant.
But it's different doing a home lawn than doing a town's lawn or town cemeteries.
Right. I see nothing here, I'll read the rest of it, then, under the breakdown. I see nothing here, I'll read the rest of it, then, under the breakdown. The bid total is $3,740. The Old Town Hall, mowing 35 per mow. Times seven mows, two in July, one in Aug, two in June, July and August, one in September. And it is a total of $245. Fall cleanup at $200, total $445. Park and ride, mowing 45 per mow, times seven mows, and we've already gone through them once, it's the same thing again, including one in September, at $315. Fall cleanup, $300 total. Fall cleanup, $300, and then a total of $615. I can guess that that means summer and fall cleanup together. Town Pound Mowing, 35 per mow, times 16 mows, at $560. Fall cleanup, $200 total, seven, uh, fall cleanup is $200 on that, and total is $760. New Town Hall and Fire Pond, mowing 70 dollars per mow, times 16 mows at $1,120. Fall cleanup, $600, with a total of $1,720. Again, there's a 200, uh, debris disposal is $200, and the total is 3,0740. And he does, this one does have references. Can't remember what container that one. I believe they were all in this. Okay. No, I'm sorry, I've got something to discuss, you got something there, says JNS Masonry?
So that last one didn't bid on the cemeteries, right?
That one didn't say anything about the bid on the cemeteries, I don't think. Nope, it's just around the town offices and...
Park and Ride, the Town Pond, the New Town Hall and Fire Pond.
Now, his references, what are them, are they homeowners or are they actual...
I have no idea what, until we follow on the phone. He's giving us this, gave us that. Let's see if anybody gave us anything even more than that. Okay, this was JNS Masonry, Brownfield, Maine. JNS Masonry submits bids for mowing town properties and cemeteries in Lebanon. Town properties, $2,630, cemeteries, $12,980. Thank you for your consideration. Next page. Okay. This is the fifth year JNS Masonry has been mowing for various towns. We are familiar with the requirements of Lebanon, I'm knowledgeable of all the cemeteries in town, the veteran cemeteries and our perpetual care cemeteries. We are also in the position of helping of the veterans with placing flags on the gravestones. References, Town of, Town of Tanworth, and it gives a name and a phone number to call. Town of Brownfield, want, uh, a name and a phone number to call. Town of Lebanon, name, and, let's see, Freedom Elementary Schools, and a number to call on that one. They've also provided us with a certificate of liability insurance.
Perfect.
Total on this one was, town properties at $2,630, the cemeteries at $12,980.
Now, I got a question on the veteran cemeteries, because if you look on the bid specs, it says you're gonna be mowing up to 60 cemeteries.
Okay.
So how, how can you bid on something, he just bid $490, up to 60 cemeteries, so say the town owner has him do 40. Then your cost per mowing, you're gonna be getting more than, how can you compare? That's why, when you guys do a bid, you should do per mowing, so everybody's bidding the same. This happened last time, like, we bid per mowing, and somebody bid a lump sum, and he gave to somebody with a lump sum. So if you have a dry summer, you're not gonna be mowing 60 cemeteries all the time, you know what I'm saying? So you're paying them to do nothing. When you guys put someone up to bid, you should check with other towns and see how they do it, so it's done the same, so everybody's bidding the same. You can't say, on your bid specs, it says up to 60 cemeteries. So, you're not mowing 60 cemeteries, and you're getting paid to do, like I said, if you're only mowing 40, you're getting paid to do 20 for nothing, right? So how can I bid against you for the, for the same exact job if you're bidding a certain number of cemeteries and I'm bidding a different number of cemeteries? That's what, your bid specs are very vague on what you do. I'm just saying, like, like me, I put a price per mow, and so that's what it is per mow, per cemetery. That's how all bids, I've mowed for a lot of towns, and that's how, we do cemeteries, that's what we do, and that's how we bid every single time, is per mow.
For the whole town?
For the whole town. North Grove, I'm bidding 75 veteran cemeteries. It's per mow, it isn't a lump sum, because comes out into July, August, most of them don't even be done, so I'm only doing maybe 40 out of 75. That's how we do it, so it's fair to the town, and it's, you're getting paid for what you do, you're not getting paid 35 extra cemeteries you don't even touch. So, I don't know how you guys... Sorry to keep asking questions, but...
It's okay, it's fine. Uh, let's see, okay. This one's a long drawn out one. C and D Landscaping, 153 Backhoe Chapel, and received March 10th, 2017. I'm gonna be here for a while, I think, on this one. This one lists, uh... Mowing the Town Hall and Weed Whacking at $60. And they got it listed as a unit price and then the amount of 960. Doesn't say how many times. Oh, okay, quantity is 16, 16 mows at $60, for a total of 960. Mowing the Old Town Hall and Weed Whacking is eight, a quantity of eight times, $30, at $240, for a total for the summer. Mowing the Town Pound is, quantity of eight times, $40, at $320, and, and Weed Whacking. Mowing Park and Ride, eight times, at $50, for a total of $400 for the, for the summer. Mowing around the Fire Pond and Weed Whacking, quantity of 16 times, at $40, for a total of $640. Fall cleanup at Town Hall is $250, with the unit price, one time, and the unit price and total price is $250. Fall cleanup, Old Town Hall, why do we have two Old Town Hall, oh, Town Hall, and then Old Town Hall is 200 for one time. Total of 200 for the summer. Fall cleanup, Town Pond, is for one time, $100, and it's $100 total for the summer. Fall cleanup, Park and Ride, for one time, $100, again, for the $100 total for the summer on that. And fall cleanup around the Fire Pond is $100 for one time, and $100 for the summer. This one's a total of $3,310. This person leaves us with a letter. To whom it may concern, my name is Chuck Stabber from C and D Landscaping. I took the better of a week to look at all the cemeteries that are, that are in the list. Upon looking at them, I noticed that a lot of them need a lot of work, some have trees growing in the cemetery, logs, debris, heavy amount of leaves, and knocked over headstones. My bid is to clean up each one and hallway. This is why it reflects in my bid that there are fences that are broken, if you wish to fix them, that would be extra, but they need some help, and I am willing to step up and take the new challenge. On top, on, I guess you should not do it, but some are growing to be more than a day's work, are going to be more than a day's work to clean up. I've tried to get ahold of people to find out what you're looking for, for maintenance, but no response, so I thought the cemeteries would need an overhaul. Reference would be the Town of Shapley, gives a phone number, Town of Acton, uh, two private bodies I'll call, I don't recognize them, and two more private bodies. They've got paperwork, State of Maine, workers' cardboard, so... I guess they've, they've included in, in this price, uh, totals for things like fencing and that's, that kind of stuff. I'm not going to read all that. Said I have a certificate of liability insurance for this company? They're giving us a straight across the board price, mowing and fall cleanup and Weed Whacking, quantity of one, it says $22,000. Apparently that's for the summer and for everything else. And then there's, on here, it also says another total of $22,000. I guess that means for the year. Upon acceptance of the contract, the sum of $22,000 is to remove trees and brush, mow and weed whack 60 cemeteries for the months of June, July, August, and I will include at no charge September and October mowing. I would like it in five payments of $4,400 each month, and a final cleanup in November. I would also do a spring cleanup at no charge to the cemeteries in the following spring. I have too many dollars worth of, of insurance and have my predetermined nation from workers' comp included. I have done a lot of work for the Town of Shapley, mowing rec fields and town hall and commons for many years. I have done work for Acton, Maine, mowing Town Hall, Fire Pond, and also a schoolhouse. I've been in business for over 20 years. And there's a copy of the letter that I read before, from these folks, and that's the same. Based on the information provided by C and D Landscaping, the application dated 2/23/2017 is approved, oh, this, this was if we approved it. They want us to sign their paperwork. This is a workers' compensation, uh, claim, not a claim, but a, what do I call that? In other words, it's a notice of appeal rights, if somebody wants to, there was a, there was a workers' complaint. And again, a certificate of liability insurance, that does state too many dollars. And that's C and D Landscaping from Shapley. Anybody confused yet?
Not yet.
Okay, this one is received March 3rd, 2017, from Allied Veteran Landscaping, Unit Box 463, South Grove, Maine. There is a phone number, right? Careful, I got that knife again.
She did too.
Okay, to the Town of Lebanon, Maine, 33, 2017. Thank you for the mow bid invitation for the 2017 season. You will find our bid attached, if you have any questions or concerns, please call, please call us, et cetera, et cetera. Okay, it's, it shows our application, Town Lebanon seeking bids, et cetera, on that. Bids are due by Friday, et cetera, et cetera. Okay, I see nothing on any of this paperwork about any references. I'll go through this, what they've given us. Old Town Hall, the site is the Old Town Hall, price is $25. Park and Ride, off Route 202, Depot Road 25, Town Office, Fire Pond, 60. Town Pound, $30. Full debris cleanup after November 1st. They're not seeing a price on that, okay, but I guess it's listed here. Old Town Hall is $125. Park and Ride off 202, 75, Town Office, and Fire Pond, $300. This sounds like totals for the year. Town Pound, 75. As I said, there's no references here.
Total is the total, or she don't know the total, right?
What's that? This one was received March 10th, 2017. Address is S. Parker, SMB Property Maintenance, 46 Bateman Street, Sanford, 04073. SMB Property Maintenance Proposal for Lebanon Town Properties Lawn Maintenance, 2017. To the Board of Selectmen, et cetera. Property Group Number One, Old Town Hall and the Park and Ride. Spring Clean Up, $250. Seasonal Mowing, $600. Fall Clean Up, $150, with a total of $1,000. Property Group Number Two, the Old Town Hall, uh, the Fire Pond... the Fire Pond, and the Town Pound. No, I'm sorry, it didn't say Old Town Hall, just says Town Hall, Fire Pond. Spring cleanup, $400. Seasonal mowing, weekly slash as necessary, $1,900. And fall cleanup, $250 for a total of $2550. Sounds like the year. This is a letter of introduction. My name is Sean Parker. I am doing business as SMB Property Maintenance. I have worked for, in the general field of lawn maintenance landscaping for over 20 years. I worked in the capacity of labor informant and now owner operated within the property management field on both public and private sector side of the industry. I have extensive experience in field maintenance, construction, lawn management, slash maintenance, and hardscaping of various applications and magnitudes. My focus is always quality over quantity, though efficiency is essential to any business success. I am a local contractor looking to expand my scope of customers and territory. Consequently, I truly believe that my time-tested experience and knowledge coupled with my desire to expand and grow my relatively new and thriving business would be advantageous to both parties. I am very detroit-oriented, conscientious, polite, and motivated. Kind of along. I also, I am open-minded and follow instruction well. The decision to employ my company would prove to be wise and beneficial to the community as well as physically sound. As per advertisement, attached documents will provide both references as well as certificates of required minimum insurances to suffice per town specifications. I sincerely thank you for your serious consideration. Sean Parker. Got a list of references here. All names with phone numbers. One of them is supervisor for Sanford Public Works. Crew leader for Sanford Public Works also. An electrician in Sanford, an operator in Sanford. And electrician is another electrician in Sanford. A statement from Bachelor Brother, Brothers Insurance for General Liability for $1 million. Per occurrence limit of $1 million and aggregate of $2 million. Okay, this last sheet just outlines the insurance, liability, medical expenses. Each occurs $1 million. Personal advertising injury limit, $1,500,000 for premises damage. $2 million for aggregate limit on products completed, dash completed operations. I don't understand what that is. Aggregate limit is except products, completed operations, again, $2 million, and medical expenses at $10,000. I'm not going to go into the rest of that. He's insured and that's all. Okay.
See ya.
This one is March 10, 2017, was received. Just says Board of Selectmen Mowing Bid. Business name is New England. It says New England Outdoors, but I've got a feeling they mean outdoors. San Juan Road, Livingston. Mowing Proposal. New England Outdoors, yeah, it is outdoors. Submit specifications and details for the following locations. They just gave us a total for the whole thing of $2,750. I'll go down the list. It says mowing based on 14 weeks. Town office and fire pond once per week. Town pound once per week. Mowing based on seven weeks. Park and ride twice monthly. Old Town Hall twice monthly. Fall cleanup is included for all of the above locations to be performed after November 1, 2017. New England Outdoors LLC hereby proposes to furnish all labor and equipment to complete the jobs, in other words, listed above by specifications written in the bid form for the sum of $2,750. Proposal prepared by New England Outdoors LLC, David McClure. Goes on for email and all that stuff. Seabreeze Property Management, referrals. Seabreeze Property Management. John Kelly, Peter Kelly, and Town of Buxton, David Anderson. Goes on to say, Town of Buxton, Parks and Recreation, Robert Elwell. Town of Standish, Maine, Gordon Billington. Linda Brooks, Recreation Director on Standish. The grass catcher property management company, Jude Thibodeau. And that has a phone number. That's all we get on that one. I don't see any liability insurance is listed or anything like that. This one's simply addressed to Board of Selectmen Cemetery Mowing Bid. Jen, if you ever run across one, I could really use it. The left hand, letter open. Letter open, left-handed.
A left-handed one?
Yeah. Really appreciate that, if you'll let me.
It's right on left.
Okay, again, this is, this is from New England Outdoors. Outdoors again. LLC, same folks that I just read a bid from. This is a mowing proposal from New England Outdoors LLC. Hereby submit specifications and details for the following locations. All cemetery specified in the bid sheet, in other words. The total bid is 13, $13,550. And I better read the disclaimer right through. Agrees to the following mowing schedule as described in bid form. Two mowings in June, July, and August, with the first mow to be completed before the 15th of each month and the second mow to be completed before the 30th of each month. Our bid includes initial spring cleanup prior to the mowing season and a fall cleanup after November 1, 2017. To include pickup of all debris, branches, garbage, and garbage to be disposed of by us. Meaning that company. New England Outdoors LLC hereby proposes to furnish all labor and equipment and to complete the job described in the bid form of all cemeteries listed for the sum of $13,550 for the season. Price is good for up to a three-year contract if agreed upon signing of the initial contract. Price being $13,550 per season. Okay, he's got referrals. The same referrals as I read in the other, in this other bid. If anybody wants to hear them again, I'd be glad to read them. Yeah, right down to the last referral. Thanks for the help.
That's a double-sided.
It's a double-sided one?
Yeah.
This one's March 10, 2017, again. Green Shadow Property Maintenance LLC. The O box 363, Rollinsford, New Hampshire, house 3869. Okay, to the town of Lebanon, Referencing Cemetery Mowing. Price includes spring cleanup, mowing, trimming, and fall cleanup for the cemeteries. Total cost, $13,280. Thank you, Bill Toby, Green Shadow Property Maintenance. Qualifications, my name is Bill Toby, owner of Green Shadow Property Maintenance. I have been in the landscaping industry for 10 years now and on my own for the past four years. My realm of work goes from maintaining ballfields, residential and commercial lawns with mowing and planting. I also do hydro seeding, hardscaping, including walkways. I mow the cemeteries for the town of Rollinsford, New Hampshire, the ballfields for the town of South Berwick, Maine, and I take care of the lawns for Portsmouth Regional Hospital in New Hampshire, just to name a few. I take pride in my work, my dedication, and hard work ethic shows with the final result of each profit. References are listed as Town of South Berwick, because of John St. Pierre Public Works. Portsmouth Regional Hospital, J. Amazin, Director of Operations. And this appears to be just for the cemeteries. Town of Lebanon Cemetery Mowing, that's all it says. Total cost, I would be dead off, $13,280. I get to go to the end of the list. End of the pile, I should say. Don't worry, don't worry, it's a cash, we can entertain. So it's obvious that some of these people have given us more than one bid. They're giving us some stuff. I don't know. This is the same, I believe, the same outfit. Green Shadow Property Maintenance. Box 363, Rollinsford, New Hampshire, same zip. Okay, yeah, that's what they've done. Town of Lebanon, mowing. Price includes spring cleanup, mowing, trimming, and fall cleanup for Old Town Hall, Town Office, and Fire Pond, Town Pound, and Park and Ride. Total cost, $3,000. Thank you, Bill Toby. And same reference, landscape in industry, 10 years and all that good stuff. She owns an LLC. Mower cemeteries for the town of, references, I am mowing cemeteries for the town of Rollinsford, ballfields for town of South Berwick, Portsmouth Regional Hospital, all the same stuff in the other one, I think. Again, town of South Berwick, gives the name John St. Pierre. Portsmouth Regional Hospital, J. Amazin. Same thing when they mow. The bid was priced. I'm trying to think of it. Didn't see any insurance for these guys.
Are they providing if they got the bid?
It's not showing on the bid.
Usually that's how it works.
March 10. Oh, wow. From Gil Patrick Property Services. Box 280, Breezy Pond Road, Lebanon, Maine. Proposal submitted to Town of Lebanon, 15 Upper Genny Road, Lebanon. They gives out phone number. Work to be performed at Lebanon. And there's more information too, that I don't need to keep reading. We hereby propose to finish, furnish all materials and perform all the labor necessary for the completion of the Old Town Hall, Park and Ride, I mean, the Old Town Hall and Park and Ride. That was the letter A to refer to. B is Town Office, the Fire Pond, and Town Pound, Fall Cleanup. All materials are guaranteed to be as specified and the above work to be performed and completed in a workmanlike manner for the sum of $75 per mowing. $130 on A. B is $135 per mowing. C is $180 per mowing. With payments to be made as follows. And you've listed monthly on that. Any alterations or deviations from the above specifications involving extra costs will be executed only upon written orders and will become an extra charge over and above the estimate. All agreements contingent upon accidents or delays beyond our control. Gil Patrick Property Services to carry necessary insurance for public liability before work is to begin. Respectfully submitted, Chris Gilpatrick. Note, if Gil Patrick Property Services award both contracts, we will prep and mow town hall at no expense to the town. Description of the business. Gil Patrick Property Services service was founded in 1998. Has been a leading vendor for mowing and maintenance services for municipalities since its inception. It has remained a family-owned and operated enterprise using modern equipment and technicians, I mean techniques, sorry. Services can now be provided, can now be provided to customers with a minimum of time and labor saving, the customer money. As it has grown to, as it has grown, so is the scope and capacity of the work done. Branching into commercial property maintenance and commercial snowmobile. Gil Patrick Property Service strives to exceed customer satisfaction and quality of work through evolving techniques, methods, and technology and advanced machinery. Gil Patrick Property Service has provided services to the following clients. Town of North Berwick. Mowing the town properties, mowing the Four Live Cemeteries, mowing the private cemeteries, mowing the veteran cemeteries. North Berwick Sanitary District. North Berwick Sanitary District, mowing of treatment facility. Town of Kittery, mowing of two live cemeteries, mowing of Fort Foster. Kittery School District, mowing of four schools. Maintenance of school grounds, layout, and stripping of athletic fields. Town of Scottboro, mowing of town properties, mowing of Dunston Cemetery, Rollinsford Grade School. Mowing of school grounds. Walmart Summersworth, maintenance of property, snow plowing and salting, sweeping of property. Walmart Sanford, maintenance of property, snow plowing and salting. Walmart Bifford.
Catch your breath, catch your breath.
There you go. Walmart Bifford, maintenance of property. Town of Lebanon, roadside mowing.
We've been around.
Yeah. Town references, town of North Berwick, Dwayne Moore, Town Manager. Town of Scottboro, Mike Shaw, Director of Public Works. Town of Kittery, David Rich, Public Works Foreman. Nate Sad sixty, Kevin Moore. And I don't see a note on there. You refer to your insurance, which we.
It should be on file anyhow.
It's on file here somewhere anyway.
Yeah. Thank you.
Yeah. Probably the most information of all.
Been around. Couple days.
All right, we've got one more. I haven't wounded anybody yet. Everybody's had to work on this. This one here is ten, yeah, March tenth. And no return address or name.
Maybe put a business guide in that one, go over those.
Oh, okay.
So we've bitten you all up.
Yeah, that's a business guide. Okay. There we go. Did I miss anything? Sure we didn't miss anything, we're gonna do that. All right. Proposal from Gilpatrick Property Services, box two eighty, Breezy Pond Road, etc. Can I go there? Proposal submitted to town eleven fifteen Upper Guinea Road, work to be performed at City of Lebanon, state of Maine. We hereby propose to furnish all materials and perform all labor necessary for the completion of A, cemetery mowing and trimming, B, cemetery cleanup. All materials are guaranteed to be as specified, and the above work to be performed and completed in a workmanlike manner for the sum of thirty-five dollars per cemetery per visit. B, ah, that was A, and B, fifty dollars per cemetery per cleanup. With payments to be made as followed, monthly. Any alterations or deviations from the above specifications involving extra costs will be executed only upon written orders or become an extra, an extra charge over and above the estimate. All agreements contingent with, upon accidents or delays beyond our control. Gilpatrick Property Services to carry necessary insurance for public liability before work is to begin. Respectfully submitted, Chris Gilpatrick. This proposal may be withdrawn from, by us if not accepted within ninety days. Okay, I covered it. The date was three times seventeen.
You just finished the list.
I've just finished reading the bids, too. Yeah, you're finished, so. Okay. So now we have until next Monday, well, we'll announce these next Monday at the meeting. Anybody got any questions?
Like I, like I stated earlier, Royce, I think it's gonna be hard to.
Well, some of them don't even, haven't even submitted.
Like you want some, like how can you distinguish the difference, you know what I mean?
Right.
Because you listed like, up to sixty, if you look at your bid specs, it said up to sixty, up to sixty cemeteries. But not all sixty cemeteries are gonna have to be mowed.
Every time.
Every time, so.
That's right.
You're gonna be, this is what happened last time you asked this proposal, you're gonna be paying somebody for not doing what needs, what don't have to be done, you know what I'm saying? Like the Park and Ride, we paid for that for like, four months without it being mowed, and they were still getting paid for it, you know what I'm saying, so.
They may have to live with it this time around, just try and make a better mix up.
Like I say, if you look at the stuff that we bid on, spell it out like, you know, per mown, per mown, and then you charge them per mown, so they know what they're, like when I do a billing, they'll state that I mowed X cemeteries on this date. That's what you pay for, I don't get paid for cemeteries that don't get mowed.
Right.
So everybody's happy, that's why you always done all those.
I've written so many that I've lost track, but I think there was one or two others like that, okay. So we gotta, obviously, we gotta do everything though again, and that's part of the week's work this week.
So next Monday, we.
Yeah, we'll be, yeah.
You're meaning it three again?
Yeah, maybe we'll be again at three, so.
All righty. Thank you.
Thank you, Chris.
Thanks, everybody.
Good night.
Night. That was boring.
Not included in that.
I was wondering how long that would take. What's going on?
Yeah, so Royce, I noticed that you didn't do a separate bid on the Prospect Hill Cemetery, but that's gonna have to go out really soon because you have spring cleanup and it's gotta be ready for Memorial Day. So just a heads up, I think you need to think about doing a very similar bid only for Prospect Hill Cemetery, very shortly.
Is that totally signed over for us yet?
It is.
It is, huh? Well, I guess we'll have to file another bid, won't we? Because we didn't have it listed this year.
Correct, but you need, it does need to be discussed right in their bid, that it, it gets, it gets paid weird because each one has to be billed to the separate trust. So that needs to be spelled out, because, I mean, whether they add five dollars or whether they add twenty dollars, they have the right to add something from multiple bills.
I think two of you guys can put forth that trust to the Attorney General, and they'll tell you if you can use it just for special care of this, I was there. They'll at least give you more information on it, and there's some things that they can allow you to do on that, so you don't have to.
That's correct, but that has to, all be done through the Attorney General.
But it'd be a lot easier that way, then it'd just be a fund just to take care of that cemetery.
Right.
That way, so say, I mean, you use it, and then if the town has to help out with it or whatever, but at least you don't have to worry about billing out to set like all kinds of, like she said, all kinds of different.
Yeah, actually, Jordan, if you look at it, not all the graves are covered by those trusts. So the Attorney General alone can combine those trusts, but those trusts all together, once they're combined, still have to be billed to the trust fund and then the town.
Right, and the rest of it would, what I'm saying, combine it, so you don't have to like, so you don't have to itemize it out by every single.
Well, once you get it combined, but I'm saying, they do need to put out a bid shortly because Memorial Day is coming up, and it's gonna have to be done for Memorial Day.
You should put that forth.
Yeah, absolutely.
Contact the attorneys, just because that'd make your lives a lot easier when you're doing that, so.
And Mary's, your attorney, Mary, they keep talking about, has been working on that for quite some time, so she would probably have some idea on where you need to go with that next if you. But, but if you don't, I mean, this is almost, this is just about the middle of March, and so if you give thirty days between now and when you open, you're getting pretty close to the end of April, and, and then Memorial Day is the end of May, so you really can't wait too long before you put the bid out. I can also just make another suggestion, too, when you do your contract with whoever you choose for your bid, remind them that they have a cemetery committee. You guys can use us to go spot check mows, make sure things are getting mowed and cleaned up, the way that they're supposed to. You know, if they give you a list of what they did this week, you can then pass it on to us, we'll be glad to go and take a look and take pictures, let you guys know how things are going with them, too. So reminder that you do have a cemetery care committee, and you could be using us.
Hey. Anything else on this subject?
Not on that subject.
I believe Milton had a trustee, or a group of trustees. Should we consider that? In regard to the cemetery.
We're gonna have to look it all over. Have no more of it. You said they did have?
Yes, they did. They had a board of trustees, it wasn't only for that particular cemetery, but it was for all their trust funds within the town, they sat as the board of trustees. But if you guys have that all combined into one trust, your treasurer could act as, you know, overseer of that trust.
Okay. Well, let's see. We've got somebody else.
Can I beat them in?
You can.
I, I think so, we're gonna swap over and get out the cemeteries we're bidding here to. Dale has brought us, has brought us some information about some changes up front, something we'd like to do. And I think the floor is yours.
Well, we'd love to have that third workstation up front.
Okay.
It'd make a huge difference for, you know, the townspeople, the office will work smoothly, people won't have to wait in line.
Yeah.
And we have the funds.
We've also got a situation going on with a computer out there that needs to be, it's been doing some pretty strange things lately.
Yes.
Which is the same thing, it's, it's, oh, it's right next door to the one we wanna fix, wanna put in.
So if we move funds from the tech fees.
Yeah.
Over to the office equipment.
Which is our computers and such.
Yeah? Then, you know, we could do it, and it's I mean, all together, I think it's gonna cost us less than sixteen hundred dollars to do it.
For both or one?
Um, well, for the new system.
Right, now the other one is gonna, we need to put in a, I believe it's a tower on that way.
Or server.
There was a battery backup, too.
We definitely need a new battery backup, and I have that figured into this, that's figured into that, to replace the battery backup. Then I also wanted to recommend that out of that same tech fees, we move another two thousand dollars for general office supplies.
Yeah, well, that's something we're need of, right now, dealing with, from what I understand.
Yeah, just to make it through, you know, the rest of the year, and the funds are there. So I wrote up a little expense transfer to see if you guys approve that.
Okay.
And I could, you know, get everything wooded and get the ball rolling, it looks like.
So that's gonna, I forget, that takes care of most of that fifty-eight hundred dollars, if I remember correctly, too.
Well, if we move.
I realize we're not putting it all on the, on the same thing, but we can transfer our funds as we need to.
Yeah, if we took, if we took thirty-five hundred out of the tech fees, there's fifty-eight hundred in there.
Right.
So this, you still have a, you know.
You still got two thousand on approximately?
Yeah.
So, so like fifteen hundred will go for a battery backup, the tower, and the server, is that what it?
Not the server, just everything for the new workstation.
This won't be a server.
Which is for the new workstation.
And a battery backup for the trio server.
Well, I'll have to come up with a server, it'll wait a time, throw it in a different direction, I think. I know I'm gonna hear this, I can see it on the.
I said it. You know it's coming, you know it's coming. So my question, I don't have a question about the additional workstation, I think they need it, I think it's a wonderful proposal, and I know that they need the tower that is at this time acting as a server. So I, I have no problem with that, but I'm still asking the question about the server. I know that we're putting in, the budget committee has agreed to put in for the budget for that for next year, is that really something that's going to happen, because we've been waiting for three years?
It's something that should happen. It would protect a lot of, it would protect our residents in that whenever they turn, the way I understand is whenever they use a charge card, this would give them more security.
We have no security at this time.
Well, there is security.
Well, it's not encrypted. Well, it's not a server, it's a tower, it's the same thing as you have, well, you don't, but the same thing the rest of us have at home. That's what we've got for a server at this time, it is in no way an actual server. It's a tower computer, which we're using as a server at this time.
Unless we, unless we, I haven't heard anybody come up with a proposal to spend, I understand it's around twelve thousand dollars for just that server.
Correct.
It is an expensive piece of equipment, and it's a separate piece of equipment.
Correct.
The money was partially raised, and then it went by, because it went back into the general fund last year.
Right.
So we can't obviously just take that money and spend it on.
No, but how many years in a row, we gotta put that money?
To do is go through the process again, and this time, I think this time, we'll have to just make sure that we get, get the proper amount, which is probably gonna be over twelve thousand, because things always cost more by the time you get them.
Correct.
So we're just gonna have to, we have another, we have one last session with the budget committee that we could possibly put a proposal in on.
It's tomorrow night.
Should we decide to do that.
All right.
It needs to be considered.
So my second half of that question is, did I just hear you say money toward like general office supplies?
Also, yes.
So what happened to your supply budget?
Well, it's used up, it's used up.
It's used. And that happens, we had, I'm pretty sure that last year or the year before, we had a time when we had to buy some extra paper and stuff, or more paper, I should say, it wasn't extra, because we get run short, it does happen.
It does happen, I know it does happen, but usually that comes out of, that's what you take out of your contingency fund, you wouldn't take it out of the technology fund, I don't think, or do?
Contingency right now, we, we've got other considerations that, that, and that's the reason we're not getting into the contingency fund. There's other stuff going on that may require that we, that the use of that contingency fund.
So do you know what the supply budget was for two thousand sixteen-seventeen? Do you have, know that number? How much, because if it's already spent, I'd like to know, how much did we already spend?
Two-thirds of it. So.
Well, we've only got another third of the year left.
Right, and that's a third of it, so office supplies.
So if you've only used two-thirds of it, and we've only got a third, we've only got a third of the year left, I'm just wondering why you, why you wanna move that much more into?
Office supplies, there was, um, it's like seven thousand there. Now there's, um, one hundred and ten ninety-one negative.
Oh, so you're already over budget on it?
Oh, yeah. And we still have three months left, so.
Good, all right, thank you.
I still need to make copies, is it okay if I just buy my own paper?
We've got paper to do what you need to do.
Okay.
We're okay then.
Can I present you with the expense transfer request and the POs for everything that we need?
I think we need to I think we need to make a vote on that.
Yeah, you don't.
Well, here's some blank ones, too, for you, the other ones I gave, those didn't have everything on there, those are better.
Oh.
Just to have your.
All right.
One of the sheet, the back sheet there is just for. One of the sheet, the back sheet there is just for, little label print is for election related, registration and.
Okay. Now, we're all set as far as that goes, we don't have any surprise mailers coming out to make a difference on this, but do we, anything yet? Would you like to look over the numbers? I think what we can do.
Doesn't show.
Just as a suggestion, I would, we could suggest that we put away the amount, I mean, that we put on the ballot this year, the amount for that server, and just see if the people wanna do it now, and if they do, absolutely, we'll go get it.
So we'll limp along with the tower in the meantime?
Limp along with the tower in the meantime, I think that our supplies for the office are more important. And we do, there's a lot of things that come out of, come out of this office supply budget, we've taken care of a lot of, what do I say? The, a lot of the other departments get covered by this, by the use of our paper and such, and that's one reason why it is such a big budget.
Plus, isn't like toilet paper and stuff like that, you know, whereas I said, I'm dropping that.
That's in there, too.
Toilet paper comes through, you have to have it.
Paper towel, paper towel.
Sorry, so, yeah, I agree with you, however, I'd like to ask, like, since Dale's got the budget right there in front of him, well, how much is in the technology, just the technology budget, not technology maintenance? No, that's for a payment of, well, how much is in that one?
What's remaining in that is thirty-two fifty.
Thirty-two fifty, and then under office equipment, I think there's a technology line under, like, office equipment?
Well, I've got office equipment, just one line, oh, one. So right now, there's about fourteen hundred in there, so if I move the other funds in there, I'll have sufficient to.
Okay, and then there's the fifty-eight hundred, which you're using some of now under office technology.
No, that's under thirty-one fees, and then tech fees. It's under, it's under tech fees.
Yeah, I'm not really sure how that's working, but.
None of it's been used.
So here, here's my question, is that it was discussed earlier that you would, might be able to purchase another couple of, from what I remember being discussed, there were seven computers that need to be replaced, two have been replaced, you still need five. Are you, so are you purchasing just another station to hook into that tower?
And that includes the computer.
Yeah, it has to have, it'll have its own tower.
It'll have its own tower? So can you utilize that new tower as your server until you get the server replaced?
No.
It's not a big enough one?
Yeah, no, it won't replace that.
It won't?
No, no.
Not even temporary, I'm just trying to figure out the best way that we can get past that one.
If I'm reading this right, we still have some money left out of the fifty-eight hundred, and if we do have to buy another tower, we could.
Oh, yeah.
Okay. That's what I was wondering about, is if we could.
How about until the end of the year, with that easy?
Okay, good, good.
And they're only a hundred dollars.
Or should the money have to go again for more, more supplies, then we would have a few dollars into it.
Okay.
That account will go either way to do this. That seems to be our best bet right now, we'll just put the server, we can put the server.
The major, but I would do a separate article specifically for that server, because every year this happens, that the money gets spent, and instead of being spent on it.
Are you gonna get the workstation?
Yes. They're signing it now.
That's good, I'm so excited. Very happy.
It'll be great. Really happy. They're kind of screaming up there, didn't they?
This transfer, make sure I've just got, got this figured right, this is thirty-five hundred dollars, and it'll cover, it's gonna go to pay, pay for these, to pay for office supplies, as well as buy the, buy the new workstation, pay for the new workstation.
Yes, sir, yeah, yeah.
You've only got fifteen hundred dollars written down on this deal.
Well, right, because in.
Is it enough?
In that category, there's already, you know, the office equipment category?
Yeah.
There's already fourteen hundred dollars.
Okay.
So there's enough for that to cover.
Yep, yep, okay. Okay, so that's signed, I don't know, do we need to make a motion on this? Yeah, we need to make a motion on the transfer. So I'll make a motion that we trans, we make a transfer on the town government budget from, I.
General Government.
How can I do it? We've got a bunch of numbers here, so probably fifteen hundred dollars towards the new workstation from, yeah.
From the tech fees.
From the tech fees.
Into office equipment.
Yeah, into office equipment, and that's, and the numbers are all written down on this expense transfer.
And that's for the new workstation, fifteen hundred dollars.
On the approved date on this transfer, what's the date today?
We have thirteen.
Thirteen.
Has to be seventeen.
I think the fifteen million dollar transfer.
Okay. Was that all in favor?
Yes.
All right, we did it.
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay.
And then the thirty, and then the two thousand dollar one?
Right.
The two thousand dollar one is to go to general office supplies from.
And it's from the same account?
Yeah, from the same account.
Tech fees.
Yeah. I didn't wanna write all over this.